Meeting of the Madera City Council. It is Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. It is now 6:00 PM. The council chambers will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting and via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 82534280298. Hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West 4th Street, Madera, California, 93637. We now call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Evans. Here. Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the invocation led tonight by Mayor Protem Anita Evans?
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing each and every one of us to come in today. Thank you for the fellowship, Father, that you have brought before us. Thank you, Father, for allowing each and every one of us to be able to be in the presence of you, Father. Allow your words to rectify through us, Father God, removing self out of the way, Father God, and allowing you to speak. Father, we honor you and we praise you. We ask you that you cover this room. We ask you that you cover this council. We ask that you cover this city, Father God. Continue to just watch over us and keep us. Continue to just touch the lives of those up in Mariposa and the lives of the United States itself, Father God. We ask these words, Father God, in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Artemio Viegas. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll ask my colleagues if there are any additions or corrections to the agenda. Seeing none, hearing none. I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
So moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Gallegos, second by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos. Here. I mean, yes, but I mean, sorry. Mayor, we're all here. Do we need to do a roll call?
Yeah, we could do just a motion and a vote. Instead of a roll call.
Okay.
So all those in favor of approval of the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Please step up to the podium, please.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to be up here today. My name is Karen Paulinelli, and I'm the CEO for Madera Community Hospital. And I'd like to introduce, I have some board members with me from Madera Community Hospital. I'd like to do an introduction. Deidre De Silva, she's our board chair. Stella Manfredi, our vice chair. Don Warnock, executive member of the board. Monty Pistaresi, executive member of the board. And we have Mark Foote, our CFO for Madera Community Hospital. And so I just want to talk about COVID and COVID relief, if that's okay. To give, to just give you a little bit of explanation about our hospital and where we're at today. So Madera Community Hospital, as you know, we're a small community hospital. We're 106 beds. And we've been here and serving this community for 50 years. And so, you know, we have a full service hospital. We have an emergency room, an intensive care unit, OB, outpatient clinics. And I just want to kind of give you a quick overview of the, of the effect COVID has had on our hospital, but not just our hospital, but hospitals everywhere. As you know, we've been dealing with COVID for the last two and a half years. And, you know, we, we knew when this pandemic started, nobody thought it was going to grow to the extreme that it has, of course. Because, you know, in the beginning, we were like, will we ever get a COVID patient? But indeed, we had one of the first COVID patients at Madera Community Hospital. And so we've been dealing with COVID for two and a half years. And I want to say that I'm so proud of our team of doctors, of our nurses, of our leadership here behind me, our board. Because, you know, our goal when the pandemic hit is to take care of people in this community. And we did do that. We have stepped up in any way possible so that we could serve this community. And when I talk about stepping up, you know, we have a 10-bed ICU. At one time, we grew our ICU to 30 beds because that's how bad COVID got here in this community and in every community. And as you know, all the hospitals were crowded. They were overcrowded. COVID was there, especially the first year that we were into COVID. And, you know, it has changed over time, but we're still dealing with COVID today. We stepped up when it was time to do vaccinations. We stepped up first to test. I mean, we had lines of people testing 200 people a day to see if they had COVID so that we can treat them. We stepped up, you know, when it was time for expensive medications to treat COVID. We got those medicines and made sure our patients had accessibility to those medicines. We stepped up when it was time to do monoclonal antibodies. Those were lifesaving treatments when there was no outpatient treatment for COVID. And so I just want you to know what we've been through. And we also did a ton of tele visit because a lot of healthcare was shut down during COVID because everybody was worried about getting COVID. So it was hard to get into your doctor's appointments, but our hospital never shut down. We continue 24/7 and, and we're there today. We shut down surgeries so we can expand our beds. And, you know, one of the things that is really important that we have to understand is that we are a small community hospital. We serve a huge medical population. And, you know, the reimbursement to hospitals, it's tough for a small community hospital. We have only ourselves to rely on. There's nobody, no big brother to bail us out when we get into trouble. And prior to the pandemic, our finances were very strong. We had a lot of money in reserves. And I want to say that during the pandemic, we have lost $26 million. That's a huge number that people don't really realize. And, you know, when we were taking care of patients, we were told by anybody that would talk to us that, don't worry, just take care of the patients because COVID relief monies are coming to hospitals. And they did step up and give a little bit of money, but it wasn't near enough to sustain a small hospital that's independent, not-for-profit, serving this community. And so we ended up getting about 11 million in relief. We have a $15 million deficit in our bottom line. We are the only community hospital here that serves this community for adults, and it's really important that we have hospital here. And so I just want you to know that, where are we today? Today, you know, this COVID pandemic has been very much a devastation financially to our hospital. There's no way we'll ever be able to recover. And when I say that, what are we doing about it? Because we saw early on just money, you know, us losing money. And the reason, you know, we can attribute those losses is that the COVID changed everything in hospitals and nursing. It was so hard to recruit nurses. Nurses quit because of the pandemic. They were worried they were going to get COVID. And then many of the nurses stopped working because they started traveling because travel companies increased their costs to nurses. And we were, we were having to pay $200 to $250 an hour for a nurse. And I will say still yet, we're two and a half years into this pandemic, and we still are paying very high dollars to support our hospital for nurses. I don't think that's going to change in the near future. Once, you know, nurses got used to making that type of money, it's, it's hard to go back. So we're still dealing with that, even though the pandemic is not as bad and COVID's not as bad as it was. But I do want to tell you that probably for the last two months, we've had about zero to two patients in our hospital. Today, we have eight. Three of those patients are in the ICU, one's on a ventilator. COVID's not behind us yet, and we're still dealing with it every day. And even though our hospital census more than doubled during COVID, it has remained like that, even though COVID numbers have been low because of the fact that many people didn't get healthcare when COVID was happening. People stayed home. They were afraid to go out and get help. And so a lot of times, people put off their healthcare issues, and now we're seeing more of those today. So I want to say, you know, why am I here today? You know, we're, we're here today because we are requesting that, that you consider some of your American Rescue Relief Funds to Madera Community Hospital. We were very grateful and thankful that the county did give us a million dollars, and we're asking that the city consider that as well. And so I thank you for your time. I really appreciate you listening today, and I'm going to give somebody from our board a moment to speak.
Could you make it very short because we have budget hearings today? And so if the next.
I will, Mayor. Thank you very much. And I will.
Thank you.
And we're, we're, to ease your mind, I'm the second and last, so we aren't all speaking. So thank you. My name is Stella Manfredi. I've been on the Madera Community Hospital Board of Directors for 11 years. I'm currently the vice chair. And I'll try not to repeat too much of what Karen says, but if I do, I apologize. I want to thank you again, Mayor Garcia and the council members for the opportunity to address you. As you may have heard, Madera Community Hospital is in the process of attempting to affiliate with St. Agnes Medical Center. We have been working on this for approximately nine full months. This process takes time, and as we are not only dealing with St. Agnes, but their parent company, Trinity Health Systems in Michigan, along with the California Attorney General, who has to approve the entire affiliation process and agreement. And it is not, and I stress, not a rubber stamp. Congressman Jim Costa has been providing invaluable assistance in this ordeal, and we are in constant contact with him weekly, if not more. This process is taking an enormous amount of time and money. During the two-and-a-half-year COVID pandemic, Madera Community Hospital, as Karen indicated, has lost approximately $26 million. Dollars and, and has only received approximately 11 million from any relief fund with no future funding anticipated, leaving a $15 million deficit just on this particular pandemic. Our reserves are depleted. We are not a district, so we do not receive any sales tax, property tax, or special type of funding. And we are in a very high medical patient user area, which does not pay enough, and I'm sure Dr. Gervade, who's in the audience, will support that, does not pay enough to break even. All this results in a very limited cash flow scenario, and this is why we are here. Simply said, we have thoroughly discussed this with Congressman Costa, and he reminded us that the two cities and counties of Madera received $60 million of American Rescue Plan to address COVID-related problems in the Madera cities and counties. Madera Community Hospital has recently received $1 million from the county to assist us in this transition process and to assist us in our cash flow needs. We understand as a board that the county is bigger than the city and has a bigger budget and received a few million dollars more. But the vast majority of our patients come from the 93637 and 93638 ZIP codes and not from the outlying areas for the most part. So in conclusion, therefore, we humbly are asking that your council agenda this request of $1 million on your next regular council meeting for discussion and approval, so Madera Community Hospital cash flow will not be in jeopardy until the transition with St. Agnes is complete. We thank you. If there's any questions, our staff or our officers can answer them. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take about 45 seconds. I see a very good friend of mine I haven't seen here for a long time, Dr. Gervade is here. And he's a good friend, an excellent doctor. He's got a racquetball court at home, and we played. And Mr. Mayor, he kicked my butt.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Thanks to Lord. In the name of Allah, most blessed, most merciful. Good evening, honorable city council and mayor staff. Thanks for our presentation, proclamation regarding recognizing August as American Muslim Appreciation Month. I want to introduce a little bit, this first month by Moon and Islam, Muhram. In the beginning, the second tariff in Islam, 24 Hijra, there are almost 1,400 years ago, after the nephew of Muhammad Messenger of Allah, Hadhrat Imam Hussain were Shahid murdered. I pray for them and city staff, police department, fire department, attorney who helped my. And the one prayer is, my Lord, expand my chest for me and ease my affair and untie thee not from the tongue, so that they understand my speech verses of Holy Quran, Surah Taha, 2528. Our Lord gave us in the word that which is good and the hair after that which is good, and protect us from the punishment of the fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other further public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom or in written? Alicia?
There's no one on Zoom.
And no written public comment, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There are no written communications?
Anybody that doesn't have a mask? Funny guy. Mayor, could you bring the group up, please? Can we get somebody to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. This is your house. Come on up to five.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor representing the mayor's office here in Madera and the city council. This is a proclamation honoring the American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Madera is strengthened by the diverse religious, political, and cultural traditions of its residents, and whereas the history of Islam is in this country dates back to before its founding, originating with enslaved Africans who brought their Muslim beliefs with them to the Americas, 1 million Muslims are currently residing in California alone. Muslims are teachers, lawyers, doctors, social workers, nurses, and business owners, as well as peace builders, activists, entrepreneurs, and politicians. And whereas CARE California is America's largest Islamic civil liberties group, their mission is to enhance understanding of Islam, protect civil liberties, promote justice, and empower American Muslims. Whereas Omar Javid and Saeed Mohammed, Muslim community leaders in Madera, have left efforts to provide food and groceries to thousands of community members through their partnership with the Central California Food Bank. And whereas Madera Islamic Center provides several services to the Muslim community of Madera, including a multilingual library, weekly youth activities such as movie nights, Sunday School, daily meals for those fasting during Ramadan, monthly community barbecues, and Islamic marriage ceremonies. Madera Islamic Center also provides burial services and an Islamic cemetery for the Muslim community of Central California. And whereas Muslims within California and throughout the nation strive to promote peace and understanding between all faiths, identities, and nationalities, they have nevertheless been forced to endure harassment, assault, and discrimination. It is therefore appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the invaluable contributions of Muslims in Madera and across the country, and to extend to them the dignity and respect every person deserves. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Santos Garcia, mayor of the city of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim August 3rd, 2022, signed this day, this third day of August, 2022. Santos Garcia, Mayor.
Hello, everybody. My name is Omar Javid. So it's an amazing honor and privilege to receive this distinction on behalf of the Muslim community here in Madera. In the spirit of recognition, we also actually want to honor Zainab Kassar and Sana Shokit for their amazing work that they have done here in the community. As a community, we have close to 700 members. Of those 700 members, we have over 30 business owners. Additionally, we have over 10 Muslim doctors who also live and reside in this community along with other professions like real estate. Additionally, we are part of school boards, planning commissions, civil service commissions, philanthropic foundations, advisory councils and boards, and work for community-based organizations. For the community, we have taken part in organizing food drives, blood drives, clothing drives, COVID vaccination clinics, COVID testing sites, worked with refugees, and participated in conducting the 2020 census. Additionally, I would like to bring awareness to highlight all the work that the Council on American Islamic Relations CARE does in civil rights and advocacy and for nominating us. I would like to encourage more individuals and communities to empower themselves and give back to our amazing city of Madera in any way or form. On behalf of the whole Muslim community, I would like to thank the mayor, city council members for their coalition. We would like to also thank the whole city of Madera for this honorable distinction and recognition of our Muslim community. Thank you very much.
Salaam alaikum, everybody. So today, I'd like to thank this mayor and the city council for presenting us with this award today. Thank you, everybody in attendance, for coming today. So today, I'm not here on behalf of civil or behalf of planning. I'm here on behalf of the community. And so today, on behalf of the community and Madera Islamic Center, I would like to recognize two individuals standing here with me for their outstanding dedication and commitment to the Madera Islamic Center and helping towards bettering its, and reaching their goals. So thank you to. Thank you, and to Sana Shokit. Side note, Sana is my sister. Just want to introduce you guys, you know? But yeah, thank you, everybody.
Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon you all. My name is Imam Ziya Rahman. I'm the Imam of Madera Islamic Center for 11 years. Muslim have been present in America back to the time when enslaved Africans were brought to this country. About 30% of them were Muslim, and they and their descendants have contributed to this country for hundreds of years. Today, Muslim community in Madera are diverse and consist of people of all backgrounds, including immigrant Muslims. We are proud of the accomplishment of local Muslims who serve in healthcare, education, finance, service job, they own businesses, and have all kinds of expertise to share with Madera. Muslim in Madera also do a lot of charitable work, including providing free food, free medical services, support of refugees, financial aid for local families, and getting Muslim out to vote. I'm proud that a Muslim in Madera provides, Islamic Center provide many services to the Muslim community of Madera, including multilingual library, weekly school, and other activities. Muslim in Madera, especially Islamic Center, also provide a local cemetery for Central California Muslim, and we appreciate the leadership and hardworking of Sheikh Abdullah. This resolution is a step forward to show how Muslims work to promote peace and build understanding across all faith. We will continue to work with our partner and our elected official in our region. I would like to thank our mayor, Santos Garcia, and the Madera City Council for recognizing August as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. I would like also to thank CARE, Council on American Islamic Relations, for providing legal services, immigration support, civic engagement, and advocating for the Muslim community. Thank you to everyone for joining us today for this historic event. Thank you.
This is your day.
She's gonna take the picture.
If we all turn sideways, we can squeeze in a little better.
Can I just sit here and pretend like this is my chair?
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
All right, let's balance out some people on that side. Keep moving, keep moving. All right, we're gonna keep moving down that way. Some of the gentlemen can go there maybe.
Turn sideways, there you go.
Keep going, keep going.
You have panoramic view. You can move that chair too.
Thank you, one more, one more. Sure, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
Awesome, awesome.
Hold on, one more. We're trying one more.
How's the regulations? Thanks for your help, brother.
Should I go outside and start passing out?
Alrighty, we will now go on to introductions. Our first introduction is for Kristi Johnson, Grants Program Manager, I believe. Marcella, you have this item?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'm very excited to announce that we have filled the vacancy for the program manager that oversees our housing element, as well as our CDBG program. Kristi Johnson, we onboarded Kristi in late July, and she's been doing great, and we're pleased to announce and pleased to have her here. And I just want to share a little bit about Kristi, and I will pass it over to Kristi, and she can elaborate a little bit more. Kristi Johnson worked for the County of Fresno's Community Development Division for over two decades. She managed Fresno County's affordable housing programs, the loan servicing and monitoring activities, as well as the CDBG program. She also administers special economic projects and programs. I believe Kristi is in the chambers, and I will allow her an opportunity to share a little bit more of herself with all of you.
Good evening, council. It's great to be here. I'm really enjoying my time in Madera and really excited about the new opportunities and challenges I'm gonna face over the rest of my career. So I'm just excited that we're able to hit the ground running and get everything going. But I wanted to be here in person because it's best always to make a good first impression. So I wanted to make sure that I had a chance to meet everybody because I'm sure our paths will cross frequently in the future.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Honorable introduction of Will Tackett, Community Development Director, by Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to introduce to Will Tackett. He's online right now. Will started on Friday as the city's new Community Development Director. I was fortunate that early on in my career that I happened to cross paths with Will at the City of Fresno. We worked together for well over ten years. Will has a background in city planning, specifically historic preservation. He's a wealth of knowledge when it comes to the subdivision map act, entitlement processing. And prior to coming to the city of Madera, Will led the largest planning team at the City of Fresno. On a monthly basis, they were processing over six hundred land use entitlements per month. That's a tremendous amount, and Will was in charge of that. So we are extremely fortunate that Will decided to join us in his capacity. Will is gonna be overseeing city planning, engineering, and the building departments. Will started on Friday, so Will's been here for four days, and I can tell you that since he's been here, it's been a huge relief to myself personally. I've been doing kind of that job for three years, and I have not done a very good job because I'm also the city manager. And so Will's helped me out tremendously already. He's covering meetings, and he's really hit the ground running. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Will if he'd like to say a couple of words.
Yeah, thank you, Arnaldo. Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Just like to express my appreciation for the opportunity. I really look forward to working with all of you, as well as city staff and its residents. As Arnold mentioned, I'm coming to you with almost twenty years' experience in planning and development. So I'm hoping that I'll be able to use that experience to contribute positively to this community, and I'm just really excited to get started. So thank you to everyone in this community for the opportunity.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Will and Mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Will is born and raised in Kingsburg, lived in Salma for about twenty years, attended Fresno State, so Will's definitely a local Valley guy. And so we're very fortunate to have him. Thank you.
Alright.
Great.
Well, thank you very much for that. We will now move on to item A, our workshop. Item A1 is a two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget workshop. I believe, Mr. O'Carroll, you have this item?
Yes, I do.
Alright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. What I have for you tonight, it's a first draft of the budget proposal for the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And I like to share my screen, so we can go through. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I like to make. Let me just try to share the screen here. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Can we just see it?
Yes, we sure can, Kings.
Okay, thank you. Now, with this workshop, this is a budget workshop, and it's really a proposed workshop, budget workshop, a draft. For council, there is no formal action that is being requested of you tonight. So this is basically informational. And we're going to go through several items here. Number one is that in preparing this budget, we made certain assumptions. And we're going to go through some of those key assumptions in terms of, you know, revenue side of the ledger and also on the expenditure side, some of the assumptions in terms of percentage increases or, you know, rates that we assumed in arriving at the numbers that make up the budget. Then we're going to focus on the revenue, go through the general city revenue, and as well as drill down to general fund and also to the individual enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, and drainage. And we'll move on to the expenditure side of things and do something on the expenditure side. So basically, we're sharing the entire budget information that we have in as much detail as we have available tonight. And as I said at the end of it, there are no actions that are required of you tonight, but we will take question and answers and direction. The plan is to bring the actual budget for adoption on the seventeenth of this month, the next council meeting. So if we can get into the assumptions here, the economic climate right now, under which we're preparing this budget, as everybody knows, inflation is a big item, and it's impacting our operations in so many ways, especially with the fuel costs, gas prices and stuff. Consumer confidence is also an issue, you know? It's not back at the level that it was pre-pandemic. But folks are still buying, and we're seeing that reflected in some of sales tax numbers. But it's not growing as fast as we would like it to grow. In terms of the pandemic, I refer back to what the hospital folks just said. Well, it seems like the pandemic is gone away, but the impact is still there, and we're still feeling it. And recently, I know in City Hall, everybody's not wearing masks. So it's still a concern, and with that, it's still impacting the economic activity around the city and the region. We've had some federal subventions. We did receive, I believe, close to twenty-three million dollars in APAP money. That has been a huge help, and I know council dedicated all of that money to helping the utilities, especially water, sewer side of the utilities. In terms of revenue, sales tax, which is the biggest revenue item that the city has, we rely on HDL, HDL, our consultants, they do revenue estimates, sales tax revenue estimates for a lot of cities in California. So we rely on their estimates. The numbers that you will see in the budget tonight is based on our discussions and the reports that we get from HDL in terms of estimates for next year's sales tax numbers. Property tax is basic, and normal thing is that we look at Proposition 13, which has that two percent limitation. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking whatever we have received year-to-date, which is, you know, what we think we're gonna get for the current fiscal year that, excuse me, for the fiscal year that ended in June, and we are increasing that by two percent in line with what's allowed by Proposition 218. Although, general and special revenues, we went through all of them, and some of them we adjusted two percent, some of them three percent, depending on what we're looking at in terms of history of that particular revenue. And for utility rates, it's the numbers that we put in the budget is based on the recently approved Proposition 218 numbers, and which in large part was based on the RIT study that was done here sometime last year. So that is basically the source of our budget estimates for all of the utilities. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits, the biggest chunk of all the expenditures for the city, is based on all the negotiated arrangements. And that includes both the increases in healthcare premiums and the employees' stipends, which the city negotiated and agreed to pay out of general fund. So all of that cost is included in the general fund. Healthcare cost in terms of overall cost of healthcare, we are going with what's proposed by the vendors consistent with market, and healthcare cost is going up everywhere, consistent with inflation. Retirement cost that we included in the budget is based on whatever we received from Carpers in the actual report. So every year, we get an actual report that actually lays out all the Carpers' numbers in terms of what is funded liability or the ongoing contributions that we need to make on behalf of the employees in terms of their retirement contributions. And on the utility of public works, all the materials that we need to run the city, we look at the history, and in most of them, we adjusted those costs by four percent. So basically, what I've just gone through here, the key assumptions that we're making that supports the numbers that you're going to see going forward here. Now, if we can, we get into the revenue, this is revenue citywide. And I apologize, there's a lot of numbers on this chart. But if you bear with me for a minute, we'll just go through it. There's six columns there. And we're giving you actually three columns there, fiscal year eighteen nineteen, fiscal year nineteen twenty, and fiscal year twenty twenty-one, just to give you a historical perspective on how these revenues have trended in the past. And then we're looking at the actual for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which is the year that just ended, June thirty. And the next column there is the projected year-end. We're looking at the actual and making some adjustments where it's necessary based on past experiences that we think we're actually going to end the fiscal year once the audit is completed. And let me point out here, though, that the numbers that you're looking at here in terms of the actual or projected in those two columns, these are really un-audited numbers. We still have the auditors, the auditors are yet to come in. They are scheduled to come in next month, and they'll go through, audit the numbers, and actually issue their annual comprehensive financial report, which will classify those numbers at that point. And the last column there is really what we're proposing for the next fiscal year, the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. If you look at taxes in general, again, for last year, the actual that we have is about thirty-five, and we're proposing that we're probably going to get in total taxes about thirty-nine million dollars coming in, which is the biggest revenue source for the city. So you can go through this numbers line by line, and, you know, at the end of it, grand total, citywide revenue, we are estimating about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars for next year. And the biggest chunks there, as I mentioned before, are taxes and then charges for services. And most of those charges for services that you see there, about thirty-nine, almost forty million dollars. Those are water, sewer, solid waste, all of that is combined within that category of charges for services. So this is a citywide perspective, looking at all the revenues that the city is teed up to get next year. And this is by category. With also, on the expenditure side, we're looking at citywide as well. And here, the categories that we have are the salaries, the materials, and the other inner front charges, functional expenses, capital outlay, and the transfers out. And again, it's the same number of columns, you know, giving you some historical perspective, and then what we budgeted last year, what's coming in in terms of actual, and then what we are proposing, the last column there, for next year. In terms of salaries, if you look at, you know, in the middle here, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted a total of salaries across the city of about thirty-three point two seven million dollars. That for next year, well, we already in the next year, right, this is August, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we are estimating about thirty-four point one billion dollars in salaries. And a large part, you know, what makes up that difference again, is increases in Carpers' contribution, increases in healthcare cost, and adjustments that are negotiated with the employees. And I believe it's a two percent salary adjustment that is, you know, agreed to with the unions. In terms of materials and supplies, the increase there is very minimal from twenty-three, previous year, twenty-three point two to about twenty-four point five. And in terms of total, if you look at total here, we are projecting estimating about a hundred and sixteen point five million dollars, compared to about a hundred and twenty in the last year, which is a little bit of a reduction. And most of that reduction is in the capital outlay. And most of that reduction is in the capital outlay. If you look at our capital outlay, we budgeted about thirty three million dollars plus to thirty four in um our fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. And next year, uh about twenty six point two million dollars in capital work. Um um and this is uh looking at just citywide. Yeah, now we begin to drill down after this to um. Uh um well, before we do that, um we looked at also uh citywide expenditures by department. And I'm just looking at some of the increases and decreases from, you know, uh uh you know, if you look, look at the the departments in terms of um um, we could pick any department, yeah, pick finance. Finance, you know, to fiscal year twenty twenty one, finance is right there in the middle. I I don't know if you can see my cursor. Uh fiscal year twenty twenty one actually is about four point six million, uh we budgeted um uh five point seven. And uh we think um we're going to end um, you know, uh projected year end about five million, we're going to spend all of the budget. Next year, we're budgeting uh close to um five point sixty nine million dollars, a little less than what was budgeted the previous year. So you have um a a a small uh uh reduction of about three point six percent. Um again, uh in total, we you know, we're looking at a proposed budget of a hundred and sixteen million, we saw that number in the previous page, compared to the uh prior year budget of the hundred and twenty. And uh most of this reduction, again, you can see um, you know, public works for um forty two million dollars here versus thirty six, and most of that is capital work. And um so, you know, looking at our citywide, that's the picture that we have, the city's in good shape at least. Uh is bringing in more revenue that is, that, you know, they're spending.
Kingsley, finally, Kingsley, I apologize for interrupting here. For says percentage, the percent of the budget change on the far right column, those are some pretty good swings. Um can you explain that or go to that, subtract from the, come from the wrong line item?
Uh which part, which one in particular?
Yeah, the one you're highlighting right there. Would you mind explaining, come with that means, please?
Okay, well, thi- this percentage change is comparing um the proposed budget line versus the last year's budget. So it's a budget to budget, there are comparisons here. So basically, we're saying that um, you know, um building inspection department, total budget was a hundred, it was nine hundred and eighty nine in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. But we are proposing um uh a million point one five, which is uh close to a sixteen point six percent increase. And you take engineering department for Houston's, uh the total budget uh uh in twenty one, uh twenty two, we we have a sixteen point eight million dollars there. For the new year, we're proposing uh thirteen point nine, which is a a reduction of um two point nine million dollars. And I'm not sure this is calculating correctly, the percentages. But in terms of numbers, these are the um uh uh the, you know, you look at the reduction.
Yeah, thank you very much, Kingsley. Can that's simply what I wanted to highlight, that I thought that far right column was probably picking up on an incorrect cell.
Yeah, it's probably picking up an incorrect cell. You're absolutely right. Um I can do a quick mark here. Um.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, that's about um, that's about seventeen percent um reduction here. That's that's wrong. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, that's a wrong percentage, that last column. But but the dollar change, yeah, it's right.
Now, or do we have to wait for?
Uh I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's okay, Kingsley. Can we can just go to the next slide?
Okay, thank you. All right, we go to the next slide. Here we start to drill down to general fund. General fund is the general operating fund of the city, which is uh really uh whatever they're talking about when you're talking about whether the city have money or the city have, you know, what what city has. Really, most of it refers to uh general fund, because general fund is what funds all the general operations of the city, fire, police, city hall, city council, finance, I T, all the general uh um stuff of the city. Now, in terms of revenue, coming into the general fund, several revenue categories. Um the taxes, which is made up of our sales tax, property tax, and all the taxes that we get within the city. That's um uh uh we are propos- we are proposing, uh uh the estimate here is about thirty one point eight million dollars uh compared to last year, uh budget of um uh twenty seven point four approximately. Um so that's a big uh, a big jump there. Um the other um one I'd like to point out here is the federal grant. And if you look at here, we have about four point three million dollars in uh grand monitied up here compared to la- um last year's budget of one point three million dollars. And within that four point three is a three million dollar parks grant that that the city with this, you know, will be receiving to do some work uh within the park uh system. Um the other charges are relatively um, you know, close. And uh in terms of total, we think our general fund revenue will come in approximately fifty one point seven million dollars compared to uh about forty two point nine million dollars last year. Yeah, year today, yeah, um we we think, you know, so far we have about forty five million dollars received. And we think by the time we close all the books, make all the adjustments, we will probably uh end up with about what, forty six point eight uh million dollars in general. Um if we move on to the expenditure side, uh did it, well, before we do that, I would just wanted to highlight the sales tax. It is um, sales tax is part of that tax number in the previous slide. Uh this, sales tax is part of this thirty one million dollars, but it's a big chunk. And uh, you know, one I I I think I said that before. That's the single biggest revenue source that the city has. I do, we just wanted to highlight that. Um, you know, and you know, again, for sales tax, we're proposing um based on H D L report and guidance, that the city will receive about twelve point three million dollars uh in actual uh sales tax. And here, you kind of see a picture, you know, the the sales tax is growing. Uh before the pandemic, in two thousand eighteen, the city was getting about eight point four million dollars. Uh two thousand nineteen, it grew to nine point four, approximately nine point five. Then um during the pandemic, you know, people still did business, uh uh all the online purchases. Uh city got um uh into in twenty twenty, about ten point seven million dollars. In twenty twenty one, that kind of tipped out off a little bit, and and we, the city received ten point two versus ten point seven. And um for twenty twenty two, uh we are projecting that once the books are closed for the year that ended June thirty uh last month, we're probably going to see about eleven million dollars in sales tax. And based on that, um the proposal uh for the estimate that H D L uh our consultants are giving us is about twelve point three million dollars. And you can see the annual changes uh and and the next um row there. Um and the percentage changes. So I just wanted to highlight sales tax because I think it's an important revenue source for the city. The other um highlight, well, is property tax and property tax in lieu. Uh property tax by and itself, uh as you can see, um, you know, before the pandemic, uh two thousand eighteen, we were about three point seven, we got to four, four million dollars. And then during the pandemic, uh it kind of reduced a little bit to three point seven, three point eight. And then we're back to um four million again, and uh but then in twenty twenty two, we are projecting a downward uh um uh a drop of uh a little bit, you know, uh close to about three point ten seven is what is being projected here that we'll get. So based on that, all we did for the next year, for the new year, for twenty twenty three, is basically adjust that for two percent that is allowed within proposition two, uh proposition thirteen, excuse me. And that's the three point nine million dollars that we included in the in the budget. The property tax in lieu of D L F is a different animal, even though property taxes used to pay uh, you know, uh pay cities for this, but it's actually vehicle license fee that in the ci- the state uh took so many years ago and it's paying back cities uh with property tax allocation that used to go to the redevelopment agencies. So that's a a little different, but you also see the trend there, you know, pre-pandemic, um, you know, uh um it was five point nine, but it has grown steadily. And like I said, this is a vehicle license fee, so um I guess um, you know, uh uh folks, I, you know, kept buying vehicles and driving and uh with, you know, for next year, new year budget, we're estimating at close to about seven point one million dollars uh for uh property tax in lieu of D L F. Uh um you see the, in total, uh what 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 it is in the annual dollar change um year year to year. And in total, for those two combined, it's a a two percent adjustment from what it was uh the year before. That's the next slide. Now, on the expenditure side, the general fund, which is really when people think about budget, the thing about what's allocated for me to spend, or for the city to spend. And uh again, you know, we're following the same pattern, we're showing about six, several uh columns. The eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty one, these are just historic, historical uh information, just to give you a perspective in terms of where the numbers are. If you look at general fund salaries, for instance, you can see growing, you know, uh the, all the small, from twenty point seven million to twenty one point two to twenty one, and then uh we budgeted uh last year, twenty four point six. We think we're going to spend close to about twenty two point one million dollars. And then um based on uh all the adjustments that I talked about earlier, in terms of Calter's increases, negotiated salary increases, um healthcare stipends and all of those combined, the adjusted number, excuse me, the adjusted number there in the proposed budget is twenty five million point two, that about. And um materials and services, uh a little bit of growth compared to the budget uh here. And um, you know, everything else, it's really uh in line. We did talk about the capital outlay that we saw there, that's the quiet grant that is included in this four point eight million dollars compared to what it was before. And um in total, um the grand total of um the expenditures, uh it's about fifty point eight million dollars for the general fund. And uh you look at general fund in summary, you have um total revenue coming in and that transfer in that makes up all the total resources uh for the proposed fiscal year twenty two, twenty three is about fifty one point six nine million dollars. All the expenditures are total about fifty point eight, we saw in the previous slides. And uh which uh puts um, as proposed as of today, our general fund in good shape that um we think we're going to generate enough revenue to cover all the expenses that's being incorporated in the budget so far. And uh with a little bit of um cushion uh in terms of um and and that's a good cushion to have because uh uh we all need to be mindful that the revenues are based on estimates. You know, you could come in a little higher, you could also come in lower. And if it does, you know, um this kind of cushion may be necessary to say, well, you know, uh uh at least we'll have enough to meet all of our uh uh expenditure obligations that we are committing in the budget. And part of this budget also includes um vacant positions. And I want to point that out here because we've had some discussions around those, there are a lot of vacant positions in the city. And uh the plan was to adjust the expenditures down downward a little bit. We have not done that yet. Um and uh the estimates is um that based on the number of vacancies that we have today. If you were to go out and start recruitments, it probably would take on the average of two months, uh two to three months to before you can bring somebody on board and start paying out those salaries. So there could be um that delta there, there for about two months salary or a three months salary that that we could save from this total number here. So that's something that I, you know, we're we're confined to that, I'm plugging the number or living in there and hope that all these projections and everything goes as planned. And at the end of the year, we see what defaults into the balance uh and and reserves. So that's your general fund in a nutshell, which is actually the city budget, and that's good news that the city has enough uh resources um estimated to uh meet all of the expenditure obligations, salaries and running the city and all of that stuff. Um so. And uh in terms of highlights, um for the general fund, um it is a, it is a balanced budget. Some of the new requests and additions that are included in that expenditure number that um, you know, you saw in the previous slide includes um um about five hundred and twenty six thousand dollar adjustment uh for the fire contract. And um there is also um the citywide trash river cleanup allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is new in this budget. And um uh we also included about three hundred thousand dollars that will be used for the housing element. Uh um and um there's also the plan now, you know, to increase the fire engine replacement fund allocation, annual allocation, money that is set aside every year so that we can accumulate enough money when those fire engines needs to be replaced, where the city can be uh in a good position or in a good place to be able to replace them, if not in, you know, totally cash, but at least have enough money. So whatever you have to borrow is not that much. We're trying to uh uh within this budget, maybe increasing from two hundred thousand a year to four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. And uh in addition, we also allocated about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for council elections within the fiscal year. So these are some of the new uh requests and um uh uh additions that are included in that total expenditure number that you saw in the previous slide. Now, we go through some of the other funds, you know, after, these are the internal service fund, and the internal service fund includes uh all of the I T funds and uh um the replacements, uh vehicle replacement fund and um all the internal service funds that serves uh the other departments at the city. Um there's really um not much in here. Um the um transfer is in, comes in from um the allocations to the other departments and most of it falls to general fund and some to the other funds that comes into the internal service fund to fund um the services that they offer to the other departments, whether it's plate or or um computers and 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 stuff like that. The surplus that we have there, six hundred and fifty, is actually uh um goes into their reserve so that uh when we need to replace, whether it's a vehicle, police vehicle, or uh um any of the other operational vehicles, that you have enough money in the uh um vehicle fleet funds to be able to replace it. And 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 want to point out, you, we are not even seeing some of the replacements included in the budget this year, but there is a replacement to the tune of about one point two million dollars uh that includes some police vehicles, street sweepers that are being replaced from the vehicle replacement fund, the fleet fund, from monies that were previously accumulated through this process. So that's a good thing that the city is kind of planning for that rainy day, and we know that things needs to be replaced, whether it's computers or vehicles. So that's, that's our fund, and it's in good shape. Um the other fund of uh we summarize here for you, and I think um the council, you've looked at um the water revenue and expense um uh picture here during the whole red study and proposition um uh two eighteen process. The numbers that you see here are really, uh for the proposed budget in this two fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, reflects those numbers that were included in that red study and also in the schedules that, you know, we saw in um the proposition uh two eighteen process. that, you know, we saw in um the proposition uh two eighteen process that was um approved, um, I believe, um, the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago. And um the expenditures are all the expenditures that are necessary to run the water operations for the year. Um, and um the total is about twelve point one million dollars and the revenues is coming in as is. And so it's a good thing that the water is beginning to accumulate that at least some money that it can do some revenue funded capital uh to, um, to keep the system going. Uh, sewer revenue is the same picture here. You know, we saw the same numbers in the uh, uh, red study uh where they highlighted the revenue requirement in that red study. Uh, that's where those numbers come from. And uh so in total, the sources that um we are projecting for next year is about eleven point seven million dollars. Total expenses for next year in the budget is about ten point three with the difference of about one point three six. And if all of this pans out the way it's projected, again, this is our projection, then we'll have um some of that money that can be applied towards um maybe uh some capital requirements of um the sewer, of the sewer operations. Um, we did the same thing with the solid waste. Solid waste, again, we got um these numbers from the uh red study proposal. And um these numbers may change depending on the rates that we, that are ultimately approved for the um, uh, um, garbage haulers uh contract. And with numbers that we included in the expenditure here, it's an estimate based on, again, that red study. And um based on that, we think we have a little bit of cushion here compared to the previous years where we have some negatives. Uh, um, uh, we're projecting negatives here. Um, uh, again, these numbers may change depending on what's ultimately at that there in terms of um the garbage rates. Some drainage, you know, um, uh, the numbers didn't change much because I, this is one of the, one of the uh uh ones that I didn't pass the uh for two eighteen process. So the numbers remained the same and um the revenues come in and I think uh the function, you know, as much as they can do based on the revenue that's coming in, where we have a small amount left. Um, and um, that's basically all the numbers that I have for you. Um, again, this, it's an informational, no, actually it's requested of you tonight. We're coming back on the seventeenth with uh the entire budget and with a whole lot more details. And uh between now and seventeenth, um, if there's any issues or any concerns or requests that the council desires, we will include that, you know, and make the necessary adjustments. Um, and then come back on the seventeenth and present you a budget that you can adopt. And uh with that, um, then we can take questions.
Thank you very much for that report. Alicia, do we have any public comment on this question?
I have no written public comment, mayor, and no one in the council chamber.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Mark. Uh, bringing it back to my colleagues, if there you have any questions or comments regarding uh this? Mr. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Um, Mr. Kingsley, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. With respects to the um, the expenditures for um our general fund, you touched on um the, the vacancies uh that we have right now for, for certain positions. So if I heard you correctly, uh, a lot of these vacancies that we have that don't get filled become a savings and therefore they're part of the surplus that we see?
Yeah, what I pointed out is that we um, we have um those vacancies. And by the way, you know, I think a lot of those vacancies might be in the police department. What, what we're looking at is um, you know, in this budget, we have not made any adjustments here for those vacancies. What I did explain is that, yes, it probably would take on the average of uh two to three months to fill it. So if you budgeted for a position for, say, a hundred dollars, we have, if you, if it takes you three months to fill that position within the year, you might actually, you know, uh, save, uh, you know, thirty dollars out of the hundred. But you don't know, you know, uh, for now, it's just a guesstimate. And we have not incorporated, you know, that in the budget to say, okay, let's just budget for seventy instead of a hundred. We have budgeted for the whole one hundred dollar here, okay? So at the end of the year, if we end up with um savings from that, you know, uh, um, from that happening, then it defaults to um the savings.
And, and therefore that becomes a, and full disclosure, I think, uh, city manager had explained that becomes part of our um unassigned fund, correct?
Well, uh, yeah, it could become part of the unassigned. Um, it's, it's your, it becomes part of your fund balance.
Thank you. You just want to confirm. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised. Do you have anything to add to this circle?
No, I do not. Can the only thing that, uh, can, can some of the numbers that we presented this evening, we try to flesh them out as best we could. Over the next ten or so days, we're going to be going through it. We're going to be refining those numbers. And when we come back to council in a couple of weeks, we'll have a final budget. So the numbers that you see today, they may shift a little bit. So just hypothetically, if you get a report and you say, hey, you know what, that number looked a little bit different. Can that's just because we're continuously going through it and refining it? And especially on grants, one of the things that we want to make sure is that the grants are properly allocated. Kingsley alluded to, we did get a couple of relatively large grants. And, and so we are seeing some, some, some big swings. For example, we got the Knox Park at two million dollars. We got the Clean California at almost a million dollars. So, so council is going to see some rather large swings in some areas, but those are good swings because they're all in the positive.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, I'll add one more. And this is more of a suggestion. I know that uh we, we do hold these budget uh reviews uh here in chambers, but we do it in a public setting. So I would suggest that maybe adding some charts and color. I know our, our, our public can certainly appreciate that also. Not, not everyone in our public is a, a math major or our, our financial analyst, but certainly that would certainly help just to kind of, you know, give us a, a, a pretty good detail as far as where we're at financially, uh, our health financially, right? And I think that would certainly help.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
Uh, we will now move on to item B, consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. Alicia, do we have members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
We have none, mayor.
Okay, I assume there's no written comments either?
No, we have no written public comment.
Thank you.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you, Mark. I will now propose public comment on this item and I will now ask for discussion or a motion by my colleagues.
Move to approve consent as presented, mayor.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by council member Montes, second by council member Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Um, item C, there are no public hearings. Uh, uh, we will move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Under D one, engineering design services for the Westbury Bridge at the Fresno River. Would that be uh Mr. Betancourt?
Yeah, it's, it's, good evening, Mayor Garcia, Madera City Council. My name is Steve Betancourt. I'm a senior civil engineer working in the engineering department for the city. And let me share my screen. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here this evening to give a presentation requesting approval for a consultant services agreement for the cornerstone engineering group, their structural engineering group, for engineering design services for the Westbury Bridge um across Fresno River. Um, Westbury Boulevard is classified as an arterial roadway um in the city's road classification system. Over the years, there has been residential development on both sides of the Fresno River, which increased traffic congestion on Cleveland Avenue, Sunset Avenue and Collector Roadways in between. Even though the need existed, the decision to construct the Westbury Bridge was delayed on more than one occasion in the past. Currently, all vehicular traffic north and south of Fresno in the immediate area use a Granada Bridge to the east of Westbury Boulevard, which is about a half mile away and has a potential of adding driving, add driving time vehicle emissions and additional uh wear on the Granada Bridge.
Oh, Mr. Um, Betancourt, I don't know if you wanted to have two slides up simultaneously, the?
I think I got a problem here. Let me back out of this. Can you see that?
Uh, it went away, but it did, it was larger.
Is that better?
No, you still have two slides.
I wonder what I did here.
We can see it, but I just want to make sure the members of the public can see the screen too.
I don't know what I've done here.
If you bring back your PowerPoints, uh, Steve, and if you share your screen, I, I think you have to change your display. So if you go back to the screen, to the PowerPoint, I, I apologize. So go ahead and go back to the PowerPoint if you don't mind.
You might, you might try hitting F five.
I'm trying to just get up the uh Microsoft or the uh Zoom. Oh, boy.
Yes, go ahead and click on your PowerPoint one more time, Steve. Can it's going to bring it back up? How you had it, if you don't mind? And then the very top, it says display settings at the very, on the very top row, if you keep going to the left.
Where am I at, mayor?
You see, keep going to the left.
It's here.
It's right above the.
I was on the wrong screen. How's that?
There you go.
Okay.
All right, teamwork.
Yeah, need, need its little help there.
Not a problem.
Okay, let me get down to the right slide here. Let's see, I was there. Okay, right here. In two thousand and eight, Cornerstone, while working for a local developer, K. Homannian Development, prepared design studies obtained bridge type approval from regulatory agencies, performed geotechnical studies. They also did hydraulic studies and prepared thirty percent design drawings. Most of the engineering is usable today, although Cornerstone and K. Homannian own the rights to this work. K. Homannian Development paid Cornerstone for the engineering and wishes to be reimbursed for the engineering work that can be used today and only for the engineering work can be used today. Funding for the engineering will be, will be from the transportation development impact fees. Now here's a uh aerial of the area, the bridge. There's a lot of development that has occurred over here and to be developed and they're unified owns that, this site right here. So you can see that this whole area currently goes this direction if they want to go across the river. In summary, the city has negotiated an engineering design services contract with Cornerstone for one million and fifteen thousand dollars and one hundred and forty-four. There is no fiscal impact to the city's general fund for this project. All funding for the engineering is from the transportation development impact fees. Funding for the construction of the Westbury Bridge is unknown at this time. The city received the engineering proposal for the full scope, civil, electrical, structural, geotechnical, hydraulic, environmental, environmental and permitting from Cornerstone. And the permitting is a big part of it, of this. Cornerstone engineering, Cornerstone's engineering fee averaged over four hundred and thirty dollars, lower than nine bridges that were, are going to be built or have been built in the surrounding counties all in the last five years. The amount of reimbursement that K. Homannian Development is not, is it, is not expected to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, which leaves a net saving in engineering fees to the city of approximately two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The city has negotiated the, those design services contact with Cornerstone for one million fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. There's no fiscal impact to the city's general fund. All funding is from development impact fees. And I think that I'm going in a circle here. And, and recommendation is we would requesting adoption of a resolution approving a consultant services agreement with Cornerstone Structural Engineering Group in the amount of one million fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars for engineering design services for the city project B two Westbury Bridge. This includes the value of the engineering work previously prepared and after reimbursement of K. Homannian, Homannian Development. Requesting to adopt in a resolution approving a budget appropriation resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty, one, one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. My apologies for the presentation, but is there any questions?
Uh, no, don't worry about it. You, you did a great job. Um, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Uh, do we have any public comment, Alicia?
We have no public comment, mayor.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, before I bring it back to my colleagues, Hilda, and welcome. And I, I apologize that I didn't uh mention to the folks that you were going to be in on Zoom. But welcome. And I do have a question. If we take up this, uh, these proposals, do, can we do them both at the same time or do we have to vote on them separately?
Okay. Let, let me, let me look at how the agendas worded, mayor. Uh, you can do that, you can consider the entire item, uh, although uh he, I don't think he addressed the appropriations resolution. And if he does, then you can consider both items at the same time. That should be brief, though.
So that'll have to be added on to?
I think it's assumed that you would uh appropriate the money for that contract, but I don't know, I did not hear, maybe I missed it. I did not hear him address the uh appropriations resolution. So maybe um, maybe the city manager can quickly address that. And then if so, then the two items can be considered as one motion.
I believe that I, I had the second bullet point on the recommendation.
That was, okay, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that is the case, then that's, then you can proceed with both, mayor.
Uh, Mr. Forrester, did you want to add something? Yeah, I see your hand up. Anthony? Oh, okay. All righty. All right. So let me bring it back to my colleagues for discussion.
Uh, seeing no discussion.
I'll make one comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know that this project is uh something that's been in the work for some time. I just do want to let my colleagues know also that uh through the Measure T uh initiative that's going out right now, there, there are some projected funds that could be utilized for that Westbury. But that project, again, is not something that's going to happen today. Obviously, we still haven't uh, uh, found the other source of funding, but it's certainly a great thing that we've started and initiated this process long overdue, especially with development going toward our west side of our, our, our city. Um, and a lot of the other bridges are taking a toll as it is right now. So it's a good thing that uh we'll get this study and, and I'm sure that if Measure T continues to, to collect the sales tax, then, then uh some of that funding will be appropriated to that. And hopefully we can find the, and leverage those funds to find the additional source of funds. And I, I know that you highlighted twenty twenty-three costs. So just a reminder that uh as time goes by, the cost of construction continues to go up. So I hope that we can try to get this done as soon as possible to avoid further costs. So thank you and thank you again for that presentation, uh, Steve.
All ready. Uh, any further comments? If not, Councilwoman Gallegos.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to thank the team for reaching out to um Cornerstone to look into these plans that were developed in twelve years ago when they were looking to build this bridge. So I appreciate them saving us quite a bit of money by reaching out and um taking time and, and pulling up files that have probably been buried for a while. So uh, that's greatly thanks for, uh, from us citizens in Madera. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, I will now uh accept the motion from my colleagues.
I said, move to approve D one as presented.
Motion to approve item D one, section one and two uh by Councilwoman Gallegos. uh, by Councilwoman Gallegos, seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. First here for that report. Uh, we now move on to item D two, franchise agreement with Mid Valley Disposal for the collection, transportation and recycling of social waste services. Sir Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Allow me to share my screen. The item before council this evening has been talked about for quite some time by either city staff or, um, come by Mid Valley, a different meeting scan that we've had over really the last 16 to 18 months. Um, for some context here, the existing agreement for solid waste pickup and solid waste is inclusive here to include recyclables and everything else. Um, spans from, from 2013 through the end of this calendar year. It was a 10 year agreement. At the time, the city entered into an agreement with Sunset. Sunset was ultimately purchased by Mid Valley. And at that point, that's when Mid Valley took over city services. So under the existing agreement, um, Comit Valley picks up all of the refuse in the city. The city today, we, we charge customers as part of the utility bill. So on a utility bill, you have solid waste, you have sewer, water, street sweeping and drainage. Um, at that point, um, the city remits payment to Mid Valley based on the number of customers and the different types of collections, if it's a six yard bin or a three yard bin for commercial accounts. And then also the two agencies, um, uh, can we partner annually on the curbside cleanup? And if I'm not mistaken, Mid Valley services 27 communities, I believe now, or is it 26 communities? And I think two communities have curbside cleanup, the city of Madera being one of them. And this curbside cleanup is obviously an enormous win for the community. And we believe that it leads to less illegal dumping, even though during the period it's quite challenging and there's a lot of illegal dumping during the annual curbside cleanup. And then as part of the existing agreement, Comit Valley currently provides three sharp drop off locations. Historically, that was two. At our request, Mid Valley added a third one in front of, um, Fire Station 56. I'm going to say about a year ago. And then also we have like a battery drop off location here at City Hall. In approximately 2017, and can that's what the C stands for on the overhead, the city transferred additional duties that the city historically performed to Mid Valley. So when the contract started back in 2013, the city provided additional services. Some of those services were transferred to Mid Valley. And then the city compensated, um, Comit Valley for those services. So while it was a 10 year contract, there has been some slight amendments during that timeframe. Unfortunately, uh, the state approved Senate Bill 1383. And the reason I say unfortunately is why maybe in the long run for the community, it's a good thing. In the short term, right now, one, it's extremely challenging and it's very expensive for a community. And I think the biggest issue with this is cost. Those costs are going to be borne by the consumer, and that's obviously something that we don't know, um, kind of, we don't want to pass on. Um, but then again, living in California, we tend to be the most progressive state. However, we do pay for it. So, um, again, um, that's why I put however, this will be very costly and I'm emphasizing very because it's not cheap. However, with that being said, in order to try to maintain the cost as low as we can for the customer and, and to ensure quality service and follow SB 1383, staff is recommending a 10 year agreement with Mid Valley this evening. One of the challenges with going with the shorter agreement is that there's a lot of upfront cost and there's a lot, um, and there's a lot of capital cost that Mid Valley has to do on the front end. The shorter the agreement, they have to try to recapture their cost. And obviously the consumer pays higher cost on a monthly basis. The, for the longer we go, that allows Mid Valley to recoup some of those upfront costs and we try to keep costs at a minimum. So we've collectively heard about SB 1383 a lot. Um, really, the biggest item here is that what's composted and what goes to the landfill is changing and there's a lot of laws and regulations. And I know that this council has attended a number of pub and workshops, and we've talked a lot about it quite a bit. There's also a lot of moving parts to this item. Council may recall that we had a recent proposition to 18 study that this council approved at the last meeting. The study included sewer, water, solid waste, including street sweeping and drainage. The first three bullet points were approved, drainage was not approved. We had Senate Bill 1383, which is, again, it's not an easy bill. Coupled all of that with an expiring contract with Mid Valley, we've had three major moving pieces as part of this, and that's why we continue to come back. And I know, and I apologize if at times it seems somewhat confusing, but there's a lot of different pieces that we're trying to marry and, and that's been one of the bigger challenges. Also, council has approved a couple of different things. So again, council approved the new rates at the last meeting, not including drainage. Uh, council previously allocated 100% of our ARPA funds, which is $23 million specifically for sewer and water. Earlier this year, council adopted changes to the municipal code. If memory serves me, I think that happened, the first reading was in December of, of, of 20, of 21. The second reading was in January of 22. And then tonight, we have a, a 10 year agreement with Mid Valley. So again, I talked a little bit about this already. There are some upfront capital costs that are necessitated. Um, uh, a longer contract and, and that's simply to be a good partner with Mid Valley. The city staff goal is to maintain a minimum cost to the consumer. Uh, we also want to minimize disruptions. We, we want to ensure that we have competitive pricing to, to our surrounding communities. And, and I think we do, um, do just that. Um, again, costs are going to go up. But one of the things that we looked as we looked at what other communities are paying, and I believe we're competitive. We may be a little bit higher in some areas, maybe a little bit lower, but overall, I think we're very competitive. And one of the more important things is we have to keep the city in compliance with SB 1383. SB 1383 does have a lot of teeth. Um, I'm, I'm not confident that Cal Recycle will aggressively go after cities. But at the same time, I don't want to be the city manager that tests that philosophy. So in terms of the contract overall, when, when, when customer pays their bills, um, the city would retain 25.5% from residential, and that's a franchise fee and commercial uh, and 20% on the commercial. That's for cost recovery. Those fees cannot just be transferred to any department in the city. That's cost recovery for the city, for services that the city then provides. Some of those, it's used for street repairs to remove tree and, and debris from the street. So for example, that's how we pay our contractor, our arbit, um, kind of the city's arbiters. When we go out and we clear the trees that overhang the public right of way, the funds come from this account. Um, there's a, there's an extra staff there. I apologize for that. Um, oh, no, I'm sorry. And staff as well. So utility billing staff, 25% of the salary for utility billing um, comes from this account. Not only that, we have to pay for materials such as handling postage and everything else. So 25% comes from solid waste. 25% comes from the, from the sewer fund. And 50% comes from the water fund, and that's how we pay utility billing staff. I should also highlight that the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund. The city cannot raise rates to pay for other things. For example, we can't raise the rates and go pay the fire department. That's not how it works. An enterprise fund, you can only spend it on related items to the work being performed. Um, at the last meeting, council may recall that, um, staff recommended that we approve the rates for, for year one. Um, and we indicated that we would come back in year two. We're going to monitor the cost extremely close just to make sure that, that the 25.5% is accurate and the 20% is accurate on cost recovery. If we can lower that moving forward, obviously, we're going to propose that we lower that. The goal is to, again, keep the cost as low as we can for the consumer and the customer. And I talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. And I did have a community member, uh, questioned my approach on this, um, and I attempted to clarify it. The goal is to maintain a nominal reserve in the solid waste account. The MBS study had indicated a much larger reserve that I'm proposing. And I know this may sound risky, however, I think the risk is on Mid Valley, not on the city. We do have to maintain a nominal kind of reserve. And the reason for that is during the pandemic, one thing we noticed is that Mid Valley continued to collect waste, we continue to charge, but a lot of people weren't paying their bills. At the end of the day, we have to make Mid Valley whole. So therefore we do have to have some, some nominal reserves. Not a reserve in the millions of dollars, but we do have to have some money in the bank in case that would happen again. Mid Valley would also collect waste at the public works yard and City Hall at no additional cost. And we would continue the annual curbside cleanup as part of this agreement. Comit Valley al- also offers walk-in services for seniors and, or, uh, and/or handicap residents. As part of the agreement, they would present up to $5,000 annually to scholarships to Madera graduates in that city, that city graduates. And they would also provide up to $10,000 a year for the Fourth of July celebration. Um, Mid Valley would also serve as a lead assisting the city. Um, ensure that we're in compliance with SB 1383 because there are, um, there is a good amount of reporting to Cal Recycle as part of this. In the past, there was reporting, but it's going to be a lot more labor intensive today. Mid Valley would continue to collect and dispose Christmas trees cut to the correct size. They would also collect up to 20 tons of illegal dumping annually. That sounds like a lot. But to give you some context, during the river cleanup, we collected 170 tons just, just in the river. And we would be increasing the sharps from three to four. So for the most part, what changes? Not a whole lot. Um, there, um, there are some things out from city staff we, we wanted to do in addition to the services that Mid Valley provides. However, at the end of the day, once we started looking at the cost associated with that, someone would have to pay for that. And one of the goals being to try to minimize cost to the consumer. So for example, one thing that we talked about is doing electronic drop off. There's a cost to that. Today, if someone has it, uh, any type of B waste, they can reach out to Mid Valley and they could pick it up. So there are services that are done already. Uh, customers just have to reach out. If we were to do an annual drop off, obviously there's additional cost and we would have to raise rates. And the goal again was to minimize rates. Um, a lot of the things that are outlined here are things that are already done. So if you're a customer, there's going to be very little change, with the exception of your bill is going to increase. So these are the proposed rates by Mid Valley. So this is residential. So in 2022, so starting actually two days ago, it would be $28.72. And again, the city would retain 25.5% of that 28.72. And it does go up annually. Um, council may recall that the rates identified as part of the MBS study were significantly higher than what's being identified here. So the rates are a lot lower than, than outlined as part of the MBS study. This would be the commercial, um, for the 96 gallon, the two cubic yard or the three cubic yard. And you can tell that one thing that we had to do was, was build in some annual increases to cover the cost for everyone, because as we collectively know, every year there's a CPI adjustment. One of the challenges that I think we've collectively had is that the existing agreement has been somewhat challenging to interpret and the city in the past has been somewhat reluctant to adjust rates. And, and that's been great for the consumer, but the problem though is that now we, we have to get up to par with industry standards. And there's cost recovery that the city does have to collect to provide or to continue to provide the services that we're providing. And then we have the four cubic yard and the six. There, there was a five cubic yard, but we've, um, we don't have any customers that are five cubic yard, or maybe we had one or two, and, and I think those are going to be transferring over to four sixes. So that's why there's no fives on the overhead. So again, rates do increase in comparison to what they are today, but they're significantly lower in almost all circumstances, but I'm not going to tell you it's every one of them. The, they're all below the proposition to 18 study. There's about, I'm going to say less than half or probably less than a dozen where they're right where the MBS study had indicated. But the vast majority are, are, are lower, especially for residential. So with that being said, staff does recommend that council adopt the resolution approving an agreement with Mid Valley for 10 years. Um, the, the rates in the staff report are for the initial five years. For years six through 10, the language contained in the report are to adjust it for the CPI. However, council may recall that we would have to do another proposition to 18 study, uh, which is required by proposition to 18 every five years. And so that's why, um, the language is contained how it is. Um, and so with that, I'll be completing my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ronaldo. Alicia, do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
And no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Mark. Bring it back to my colleagues after closing public comment on this item. Uh, Councilmember Montes.
I, I have a question, um, and this might be for, uh, Mid Valley, but, um, so what happens, um, if the provisions of 1383 uh, change, go up or down, laws change all the time? And there's, I've, I don't know how true this is, but I've heard some conversation about, uh, you know, certain, certain cities or municipalities being on size may in the future be exempted. Um, so what, what is, what would be the impact on our race, if any?
Well, first of all, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, Joseph Kalpikoff, president and owner of Mid Valley Disposal. Um, there are a few exemptions right now. Um, they were half, the, if a city was, that, so there's two of them. There's a, a low population waiver. If you have under 7,500 uh, on an annual population with the city, you can waive some of the requirements of 1383. The other one is if you are at an elevation above 5,000 feet, you can get a waiver as well. However, with the city of Madera's population currently, they do not, um, qualify for any waivers. What we've seen, um, with Cal Recycle and what we've seen, we've been dealing with this year is, is them literally doubling down on the requirements of 1383. Um, I remember in, in 2021 and beginning of it, most cities asked for, um, uh, a, a little bit longer to implement. We wanted two years. Um, and instead of that, they came back with, uh, creating an enforcement branch at Cal Recycle, um, and, and enforcing the enforcement branch on two municipalities. But what this agreement does is it gets the city into 100% compliance with 1383. Um, it is a responsibility that is put on from Cal Recycle to municipalities. And then through this contract, you are taking those responsibilities and passing them through, uh, to my company. And so we are in charge of implementing the, the food rescue. We're in charge of implementing, um, the, the food into the organics and then guaranteeing the city capacity for the next 10 years of where your food waste is going to go. Um, and as Arnold mentioned that the, you know, our, our capacity is in Kerman. We have a facility that can handle 100% of, um, the city of Madera's food waste from now and next 10 years. And so we're guaranteeing that to the state as well. That is a qualifier for 1383. Um, if, if you're, to answer your question, maybe more specifically, if the law changes, there are provisions in the agreement that we can adjust the scope of work and that would, that would, that would come with a, a rate decrease or an increase at that time, depending on what levels the, the state decides to change.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion. Oh, Councilwoman Gallegos, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Joseph, I just have one quick question because we saw the overview and I am volunteering myself to help, um, share this, but if we, I, I know we've been in the schools before giving education, but with 1383, it's a little different. We're going to now try to teach our community to put food and greens in the green, not just grass. So, um, I'm hoping that, I didn't see it on the overview, that we're going to still get into the schools because our kids are the ones who educate our parents on a lot of things and they're the ones that will, you know, you, oh, no, mom, that doesn't go in that one. It goes in the green. And so I know we're coming down the line in the next few years that it won't just be commercial, be residential that is, is going to be required. Right now, we're not required. We're just ask, asking our residents to be diligent about recycling and we're asking them to, um, compost their, their food products. So um, that's something are, we're still going to be working on with our community.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Gallegos, as you know, we believe that the, and we know the results of teaching education in schools and what it does to the community in, in terms of recycling program. So yes, absolutely. That's going to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, I will accept a motion from my colleagues.
Then we'll do approve item D two.
Second.
Motion to approve item D two by Councilmember Montes, seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos. All those in favor of the, uh, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ronaldo. Good luck. The only thing I would switch is from the, the five and the 10,000 for the scholarships. I'd make the scholarships 10,000 and the fireworks 5,000. That's a joke, brother. That's a joke. All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Um, we will have no administrative reports. We will now move on to item F, Councilmember Reports, Announcements, Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and the council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request. to request updates to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. The first thing is, um, I'd like to congratulate one of our council members, Montes here for becoming employee of the quarter for Fresno County. So, or city of Fresno. So congratulations, um, Councilman Montes. Uh, the second thing is that's why I'm a little out of sorts. Today I've been in, um, uh, kind of a conference with Madera Unified that we believe doing a student champion and how as educators and community members that we are going to raise our children to a higher bar. And I have to tell you, Superintendent Lyle Shirley, uh, really touched upon and gave us so many kudos of the city of Madera today to all, uh, Madera Unified Certificate and Classified. And it was just impressive on how he was so positive of what the city is doing and moving forward and supporting the schools and being a great partner. So, um, and, and saying that in order to get our students where they need to be and to come back to Madera and, and be part of this community, it was refreshing to hear that we are the place they need to come to and we are moving with change and we're going to do great things here together. So, um, I commend the board for putting this together and Superintendent Lyle. Uh, the next thing is I would like to ask my colleagues, and this is something that we can decide, is I would like to ask for Madera Community Hospital to come back in a workshop so that we can have dialogue. With that, I would ask our staffs to ask them for some financials. Um, I have several questions about the dire straits that they're in right now and, um, and we are too, and they did mention to, uh, money for the, from our ARPA funds. Not, we couldn't give comments, but ARPA funds have already been, um, allocated. So it would be something that this dais would have to decide if this is something that we can do and that is important, that we would have to figure out where that's coming from. So that is kind of what I'd like to say and, and that's all I have to report.
Councilwoman Gallegos, are you making a motion for that?
Um, I, well, it's a, you know.
Recommendation?
Recommendation.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, um, in reference to the last statement about Madera Community Hospital, and I understand that they may very well be in dire straits and I understand that we already allocated our money out, but in my opinion.
We are going into discussion.
I understand that.
This is not on the agenda. I think the request was that we.
I understand that.
For discussion.
No, I understand that, but I'm just stating right now that we need to take care of home first. It can go on the agenda and everything.
Discussing the item that's not on the agenda, I would suggest we put it on the agenda so we can have further discussion. That was a direction.
That was fine. That's fine. Yes.
So, um, the request is to put a workshop together, uh, led by Madera Community Hospital and to discuss, uh, the, the, uh, the problems that they're having over there.
Yes, and to have our staff reach out for financials and, um, some information. So we have a background before they do come and present to us.
And this is not, uh, to, uh, request funds. This is just a workshop.
Yes.
Just a workshop. Okay.
All right. An informational workshop.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
And come here, so council policy is, is if the majority of the council proposes with the thumbs up, we would schedule it.
Okay. We got three, four, five, six unanimous.
Okay, so, um, come for the record, all seven council members have given a thumbs up. So can, um, can we reach out to the hospital? And if this can be done at the next council meeting, based on their availability, we'll schedule it. But if not, we'll go after availability if that's okay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I have nothing to comment on. Thank you.
Councilmember Montes.
Um, I have nothing to report, just a little embarrassed. Blushed a little bit. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Evans.
Yes, um, Juneteenth commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. And June 19th, I'm asking if, from my, from my colleagues, if we could put that on the calendar for next year to be a citywide holiday in accordance to the state of California and representing the colleagues. I'm asking my colleagues if they would give me a thumbs up to have this placed on the agenda for discussion. To have June 19th from here on out be the citywide holiday in reference to Juneteenth Day. So I'm asking for a thumbs up on that as well.
For discussion.
Yeah.
To bring it back for discussion.
Yes, yes, yes.
Unanimous.
Good. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Mejia.
Oh, I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Villegas.
Oh, nothing to report.
Thank you. I, I was able to participate in a backpack giveaway, uh, sponsored by Madera Ford. And, uh, this Saturday, uh, they gave over 250 backpacks and, and other items to children in, in, from the city of Madera, um, as students of the city of Madera. It was a great event. Um, when you looked at the children as they received their backpack, you can just see the glow and the big smiles. And there's a lot of people that need our, our assistance. So they're committed to doing this every year. We did it, uh, they did it last year and I participated then. Um, they're also going to have a bike giveaway in December. And so they're fully committed, fully engaged in our community and I thank them for that. And I just wanted to acknowledge them for that, for that, uh, great gift. We will now move on to, well, we don't have any closed session tonight. Uh, we will be adjourning this meeting. It is now 7:55. This meeting is adjourned at 7:55. And I thank everyone who came here and participated tonight. Thank you very much and safe travels home.